All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled council meeting for Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Let the record show all councils present except for Councillor Ellis and Councillor Hildebrand. There is no adds and deletes tonight. Do I get approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Councillor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councillor Wyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Move on to approval of minutes. Approve the minutes of Hibbing City Council Meeting, September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Wish of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Approve by Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman.
Second.
Second by Councillor Whitney. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Approve the minutes of Hibbing City Workshop Meeting of September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Approve by Councillor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Approve council payable dated nine thirteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Checks one seven five 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 one in amount of forty-seven thousand, five hundred. Uh, nine fourteen, twenty-three. Checks number one, seven, five, 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 two through one, seven, five, six, four, two in amount of one million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and nine cents. Check dated nine eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Checks number one, seven, five, six, four, three through one, seven, five, six, four, seven in amount of ninety-one thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-one. Two, approve the payroll for pay period ending nine, eight, twenty-three. Checks number one, six, eight, eight, zero, seven through one, six, eight, eight, one, seven in amount of five hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars, forty-one cents. Three, authorize the Hibbing City Council in the Hibbing Public Utilities Community Open House on Thursday, October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three at ninety-two, Sixth Avenue East at five P M. Or the motion, promotion of Desiree Jensen to the engineer permit effective September ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Authorize the hire of Lacy Farmer for patrol officer, Hibbing Police Department, pending pre-employment contingencies. Six, approve the updated coding technician job description effective September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Seven, authorize the posting of a temporary librarian intern. Eight, authorize the posting of temporary play park attendant for library. Nine, authorize the hire Jennifer Plamsowski for the temporary library aid pending pre-employment contingencies. Authorize the hire eleven. Ten, authorize the hire of Shirley Swift as line dancing instructor for the city service department. Eleven, proclaim November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three as lung cancer awareness month. Twelve, offer the hire of Mackenzie Estey for the automated trucker position in the sanitation department effective September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Thirteen, offer the hire of Christie Fairchild for equipment operator position in the Streets and Elles Department effective September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Fourteen, authorize the posting of a full-time equipment operator, one, in Streets and Elles Department. Fifteen, authorize posting of a full-time automotive mechanic for the public work department. Sixteen, set the next regular city council meeting for Wednesday, October third, two thousand and twenty-three, in the City Hall Council Chamber. Seventeen, set the next city council workshop meeting for Wednesday, October fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, following the regular meeting in the City Hall Council Chambers. Items previously approved, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the house bonding tour for the Public Utilities Water Treatment Plant on Thursday, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, at nine thirty A M. Set the public hearing for the adoption of a panel E V on Wednesday, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, at P M, in the City Hall Council Chamber. Wish of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman. Support?
Support.
Support by Councillor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. At this time, we have nothing public for, but we do have Paul Peltier with Rams today, uh, who will be speaking to us about, uh, Rams, who is now the chair of, director of.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hello, Hibbing. It is good to be back home on the range. My name's Paul Peltier. I was born in Hibbing at the Adams Clinic, um, and my mother worked for thirty-two years at Hibbing Taconite. My mom sold tickets for Dill Airlines, formerly Northwest, for a number of years after she was done raising us, Yahoos up in Ball Township. Um, I am a graduate of Grand Rapids High School and a fifteen-year public school educator in the choir field, and I'm happy to come back home, serve my community back on the Iron Range, here as the executive director of Rams. Um, as many of you, Rams is an intergovernmental organization made up of over sixty-five local units of government and school districts on the Iron Range, represent over seventy-thousand people in the Taconite Assistance Area, and we offer all manner of assistance and, um, kind of collaborative services for all of our local members. Um, we have so many things that we have done in the past with, uh, previous executive directors, Georgie, Dicklich, Rookavina. You could go back through history to see all the way back to nineteen eighty-nine when, uh, Rams was started, kind of in reaction to the Oliver Mining Company, not being our region of fair shake, and, uh, the cities, townships, and school districts decided to band together and in true range fashion stand up themselves because they knew no one was going to come to save them except themselves. And so Rams was created back then, and it's been a thriving organization ever since, and it is my privilege, pleasure to lead this and speak to you today and tell you both a little bit about myself as well as the organization and how we see it moving forward. Um, the last, I started in July. I was hired early on in this year, and then I was able to take the job starting July after my final contract and teaching expired, and, um, I have to tell you that moving our family to the Irons was one of the greatest things that we could ask for because it meant coming home closer to my folks and my cousins and my family here, but finding house was a real challenge. And so I'm, I'm living kind of some struggles you hear from your constituents. Um, our kids attend Rock Ridge Schools, and they're adjusting, they're making friends, they're making family acquaintances stronger than ever before, and, um, it's nice to have a supportive network, both friends and family that have welcomed us back home. Um, Rams is designed to bring elected officials together from across the region to coordinate our efforts, to make sure we have a vibrant region for years to come, and we have kind of seen this area come full circle from a time when, when it was okay to be insular and okay to kind of say, you know what, Hibbing's going to be Hibbing, Grand Rapids is just going to be Grand Rapids, Virginia is just going to be Virginia, and Rams is here to say, we've always known that if we stand together with one range and have one voice, we can make a lot of things happen. We can be very effective if we stand together. And if this region, Taconite Assistance Area, is going to continue to move forward, it's going to be because of like-minded people like yourself saying with others from other communities, hey, we care about what happens in your town because it affects us too. A rising tide lifts all boats, and a good thing celebrated everywhere is a good thing for your community. We can all learn from things that are happening, both in housing and childcare and healthcare, um, really nuts and bolts services that are impacting our citizens' daily lives, whether it's utilities, public or otherwise, um, that interface is where Rams finds itself at the middle of those conversations as a respect convener in the area around issues of region-wide import. Um, I've circulated and with, um, Ms. Sepla's help here, this packet of information for you. Have you all been able to receive that? Good. So on there, I have my contact information, and my phone number is two one eight, four three one, one three one seven. And yes, I do know everyone is listening, so I realize that went over TV. So, um, please feel free to contact me if you have any, any questions or concerns at any time. My phone's always on, I'll always pick up and answer you. Um, our office is in Mount Nyir, and I live in Virginia, but I have been traveling everywhere. I've put on twelve hundred miles in two and a half months, uh, visiting all twenty-two of our Rams member, board members and our, and our school superintendents, as well as, um, mines in the area, copper nickel facilities in the area, um, businesses and utility in the area, uh, being out and available and accessible, a high priority to me, and I hope you feel invited to a conversation by my presence here today, as well as just at any time, should you feel moved to do so. Um, if you will open up your packet here, I just want to quickly take you through some of the information that I provided for you, and as a teacher, I won't read every single thing because I can respect your ability to kind of go there, right? Um, there's a map of the T A A and the districts involved. You can see it's a large geographic region, and when we work together, we are quite impactful. Um, further, as we move through the packet, you'll see on the following page, we have our Rams legislative priorities. These are not legislative priorities dictated by one yahoo in a corner office, not really putting their ear to the ground. These are our members, twenty-two city township and school district personnel, who are elected board members to their own offices and then to the Rams Board at our annual dinner, which will be held on number fourteenth at the ITMEC this year. You're all invited. Um, those people help set our priorities, and they decide what we go after in the legislature. And you can see there are some very broad-based, um, things that have a lot of support, um, and you'll follow, see through this document here, and you'll see legislative update from May thirty-first. And this is put together, um, as an effort to help our communities understand the broad scope of all of the work being at the Minnesota Legislature. So this could, you could easily look at this and say, oh, they have this, I'm super jealous of that. A wise person would look at that and say, ooh, I wish that could work for us. And that's one of the values that we divert from Rams, is that we can help you see how others are doing it, and maybe you can pick and choose things that work for you and your community. Maybe it'll jog an idea that you hadn't thought of before, or enforce a point that you've been trying to make to a fellow councillor. Um, not all of the items included in our legislative report are items that you'll find in our legislative priorities, and that's okay, because we don't go after all the things all of the time. We are range first, range first. So if you're for the range, I'm for you, and I gladly stand shoulder to shoulder with anyone of any party and persuasion who wants to work with us and for our people. And so with that in mind, I just wanted to say thank you for the time, and, uh, I'm available for questions, but I'm also cognizant of your urgency to work through your agenda today, and so thank you very much, everyone.
Paul, I just want to say thank you. I, I know I've been at, uh, probably half a dozen mayoral meetings that I've really enjoyed, which is a separate side group that, uh, you head up, and, and, uh, it's been very formative, and I've really enjoyed it, and I know Jennifer Hoffmann-Sockman, our councillor, has, is on our Rams and does a great job of keeping us informed of everything that, uh, comes forward in the regular Rams meetings. So, does anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great, thanks.
Okay, we'll move on. A department committee reports. We'll start with, uh, Bill Fishel, Mr. Pat Green.
Mayor and council, uh, the first, first one is a rezon, a zoning amendment to rezone a parcel property on First Avenue, formerly the old Bib Miller Building. Everybody used to know where that is. Um, it's been vacant for quite a while. So right now, it's zoned heavy industrial, and we heard a hearing from, on mic peer request, to zone it light industrial, which allows for lighter uses of that building, and trying also to keep heavy industrial away from residential, and that's right across the street right now, residential. So it would be that parcel, and the planning commission, it met all the requirements, and the planning commission forwarded it, uh, recommended approval.
Very good. Hearing what Ms. Green had said about, uh, moving from heavy to light industrial, uh, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councillor Swyberg.
Sir.
Support by Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. BPAP.
This is another zoning amendment, uh, requested by Tom and Jennifer Nemenech. This is of, uh, Stuko Road off of Highway ninety-two, and this is to rezone two forty-acre parcels, um, which are zoned open space right now. Why they were, I know it was before I ever came here, um, and everything else below that, and east and west is, uh, zoned A R agricultural. The property he owns now is right below that is agricultural, and the request is to rezone that A R agricultural rural residential, and so his reason why you can apply for an interim use permit to have a gravel pit, and there is a gravel pit that he owns just south of that. So this is just the hearing to rezone and, uh, the commission recommended approval to rezone those two forties, and I recommend that portion.
So you're looking forward to move forward to rezone those two forty acres or totally eighty acres?
Correct.
All right. Hearing what Ms. Green had to say? Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Approve by Councillor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. See you, Pat.
So the next, um, resolution was to Tom, Tom and Jennifer Nemenech, that had a hearing to do gravel pit on those two forties, and the planning commission heard all the comments and everything, but a few days before the hearing, a neighbor brought me some information concerning M P C A and, uh, and wells that are being monitored from a forty west of Tom's forty, and that is the old Kitsville dumps, open dump, and contamination, and so they have wells, and the neighbor's concern is that if they start digging, you know, close to that forty, will, will it be contaminated? Well, I didn't get a chance to talk to M P C A, and I recommended to the planning commission to continue this hearing until we had more information on, you know, on the neighbor's concerns, and, but they did forward it to the council. Um, I recommend, uh, now that I do have more information, I've talked to the M P C, talked to the St. Louis County Environmental, St. Louis County owns the property that the old dump was on. The wells have not been monitored, and M P C A admitted that for at least twenty years. The dump was closed in nineteen eighty, but the wells are there. Um, I don't think it's going to be any problem, and I did talk to Mr. Nemenech as far as both forties, because that's what the interim use for, you know, but really he's looking for just the forty to the east, uh, just north of the gravel pit that's already operating. And so that, if we send it back, that's what I'm going to recommend, is the gravel pit, the permit would only be for the forty to the east, not the forty that's close to the, uh, killed dump. And if that ever, according to him, there is, you know, gravel, they must have done test holes, um, but that would be twenty-five to thirty years download before they would ever, or maybe not even somebody else tried to solve.
Hearing what you have to say about, uh, a use term use permit, uh, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. If we table this, then does he have to back with the same request, or do you vote it down if we decide to, um, wait until you have all the information? What's the process?
Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman, my understanding then, when I talked to Mr. Nemenech regarding this issue, he would request that you go back to the planning commission to consider it just with respect to that one particular forty.
Correct. For the more information and, and all, and also M P C A information that I have, and also that it would only the one forty, and I guess since they approved it or sent it to the council, do they need to deny it? Can we just continue it?
I think, I think you could simply refer back rather than take other action, other, refer it back to the planning commission to get more information from the building office and go forward.
Thank you. Then I will make that motion to refer it back to the planning.
Okay. So we have a table on that to refer it back to?
I would ask that you take action to refer it back to the planning commission. That would be my request.
Yes.
So we, uh, request an action to refer it back to the planning commission. Uh, other wishes of the council.
That's her motion, so she'd need a second.
Yeah, we need a second.
I'd support that.
By Councillor Fossil. Any discussion?
Yes. So just to be clear, this, if this was to be passed now, they'd be able to pull off of the eighty-acre total, is what they're asking for here, is the full, all their, their two forties?
With the new information, let's say there was some more conditions put on even with new information, or, um, I think the new resolution from, uh, is going to be for the forty, and if any more, any conditions are required, they'll make a new motion at the next hearing.
Yeah, just to clarify what you said, the, the Kitsville dump site, but what you're requesting is to leave the forty acres between Kitsville dump and the forty that Nemenech is, would start opening up, and it would be twenty-five to thirty years before they'd ever get to this forty.
And they would have to apply.
They'd have to reapply at that time. But your biggest focus was you wanted that forty acres between the Kitsville site and, uh, active expansion of his gravel.
Correct. And they are, they are two separate parcels, so that would be, it would be, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to community development director, Ms. Olivante.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, the, what I'm asking for tonight is the authorize the signing of a service agreement with New Street, a historic building reuse expert, to develop a matrix options for City Hall. In the twenty-three city strategic plan, high priority goal number four is to create a SIP for city equipment facilities and infrastructure, and that's a capital investment plan for those, um, items. And as part of the ongoing planning for the future of the hall, we have been researching technical assists to help us provide a matrix of options for this facility. New History leverages history to unlock economic, community, and cultural value of our existing buildings and sites. New History uniquely combines these core services, project leadership, historical consulting, historic architecture, and historic tax credit certification. Their integrated team includes historians, licensed design professionals, and project managers for building reuse, all with depth of experience in the regulatory, financial, and fiscal framework of historic preservation and building reuse. They believe that use is the best form of preservation. So at this time, I would ask that you approve signing the agreement with two, um, two revisions that like to make per attorney Borland's, um, recommendation. So the first one is that, um, it says that if there's any, in the service agreement, it says that if there are any disputes about the matter that we are working on, the proposed contract provides for mediation in Minneapolis or to be resolved in District, in Hennepin County, I'm going to go back and ask them to do that in St. Louis County, um, and I would ask Attorney Borland if he has any other further advice on that, or if I'm reading your, your recommendation currently.
You're reading correctly.
Okay. And, um, New History in the, in the conversations I've had them, it says that they would agree to that, but I, um, I'm going to make the recommendation, um, from stuff, to sign the agreement with those two ribbons.
Very good.
At this time, I'll stand for questions.
All right. Uh, so looking for the authorization of signing a service agreement with New History, basically to take a, uh, a newer look at City Hall. Uh, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councillor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councillor Fossil. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, if you'd like.
I just had a, I had a quick question. Um, so this, this contract, what would be the expectation timeline that we would have some feedback from them?
They're hoping to come and give a presentation of the matrix of options by the end of this year to City Council, and, um, one thing I did not include in this because I didn't have the information when I wrote the RCA was the maximum amount of the service agreement would be up to fifteen thousand dollars. That was going to be Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman's question.
That's one of them. Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Very good. Uh, any other questions?
Yes, my other question is, um, is there any duplication of services with our, um, architects that we have on, you know, that we have working on this building?
Yes, thank you very much for that question as well, um, Madam Councillor. No, there's no duplication of services because the, the current contract that we've been working on with I C S and D S W is to look at City Hall condition of the building. New History will take that report from those, um, entities, use that as information as a platform to start, and then talk about, with the condition of City Hall it is, how does it stay in use as a hundred percent for a public building? How does it potentially stay in use for, you know, some portion of public building and additional tenants? Like, we already have two tenants in the bill, St. Louis County and D V S. How would it potentially look if, um, some other entity were to take an opi City Hall? Um, that was a part of the conversation at the workshop, was what are the options that City Council has in front of them, and this will put some of those options. The contract that we have with I C S and D S G W does not necessarily address that part of the, the, um, situation as it sits in front of the City Council, and so to come up with more of those, um, options, this consultant will help us do that.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that, especially for our constituents. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes, Councillor Whitney.
Betsy, is there a local example of like, one that used this, their services and came up with Lucian and put it into action, and here's what we did with it, and it's a current successor, whatever?
So the current, um, most local example that they've referenced is in Luth, um, the Central School, and a couple of other, um, historic reuse, the, the old St. Louis County Jail that was, um, repurposed into housing and kept some of those historic, like bars and things in there, um, is a couple of examples that they have worked on locally.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
That's good that they've worked regionally. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none? Wish of the council, or we have a motion, I'm sorry.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. See you, Betsy.
Thank you.
They will move on to, uh, City Service Director Nick Arora.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Uh, first one on the agenda tonight, I have an additional, uh, services proposal from S E H, and this is your additional civil engineering work up at the Mindview, and it specifically handles the, uh, the sidewalk and A D A accessibility into the building and park lot areas that we know we have to, uh, finalize and get done before we can open. So this is, um, for staking and construction administration of that project, so looking for your approval.
Okay. Hearing what Mr. Arora had to say? What's your motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by, uh, Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councillor Fossil. Any discussion? Uh, the amount?
What's that?
What was the amount?
Uh, sixty hundred dollars.
Sixty-five hundred dollars. Okay. And you're comfortable with everything they've laid out that they're going to take care of services?
Yep, correct. Yeah, that's, um, additional A D A parking spots, paving, a good portion of the top area there, and then the, uh, the rampways into the building, concrete rampways with guardrails and everything like that for, um, for safety purposes.
Does this look like the last change order possibly on this project? I guess you might be, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get you in that crystal ball and, and just curious.
Maybe. I sure hope so.
Okay. Very good. I appreciate that answer. All right. Uh, could we have, that's all discussions, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mayor. And we will move, uh, to number B.
The second one here is regarding the pickleball courts. This one is, uh, an extended warranty for the project, as we talked about a few times, and, and a few correspondents got, went out to the council regarding the pickleball construction. We had a few compaction, um, geotechnical compaction testing results that didn't come back favorable. Um, we did additional testing after, after that to see if it was uniform across the entire area, and we did six more tests out there, and four of the six passed, and, uh, two of them were non-passing. Um, and then it was paved. So we have a couple areas that were, um, under compaction, but, um, talking with our city engineer and S E H as our consulting engineer on the project, we all kind of came to the consensus that, you know, we, we feel we can move forward comfortably with the results that we have. We asked the contractor for an extended warranty project to three years instead of the one-year commitment that they had, um, originally, and we know eventually, you know, with our climate, we'll heave and crack and stuff, but we don't want to get started out on the wrong foot, and, um, we feel that if anything would happen, it would probably be early on in the process, so this three-year agreement would, our three-year warranty would hopefully cover us if something should happen, and, uh, the, the compaction, um, results were specked out as D O T standards, so, um, we are nodding vehicles on these, on these courts, so, um, they did not pass, actually, they failed by just a little bit. Um, it wasn't like they were totally off the mark, they were close, and, uh, for that reason, again, I think we, we should be good moving forward with the project as is. So I just ask you guys, uh, approve the, uh, updated warranty for the project, so.
Very good. Hearing what, uh, the update from Mr. Arora, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councillor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councillor Swyberg. Any discussion?
I do have a question.
Councillor.
Just pathetically, what if the contractor goes out of business within that three-year range? Is S E H N held accountable, or how does that work?
That is a good question. I don't have a clear answer for you on that one.
Thank you.
If the contractor is making the warranty not missing, as respective.
Right, so.
Councillor Hoffmann-Sockman, so it's, I mean, if the contract was no longer in existence, I know the whole apartment.
and a whole apartment, maybe have a clinic in bankruptcy there.
I was just wondering how that works, so thank you.
Very good.
One more question?
Yes, one more question, Mr. Fossil.
With, with the extended warranty, how does it look like for a projected opening date or use of the balls?
It's hard to say at this point, just because we're running into unfavorable weather. Hopefully, gonna do fencing here this, the end of this week, the, the main post to go in, and then it all depends on the surface after that. If we can get consistent warm temperatures above, I think they need 55 to put the fencing down, then, you know, it looks better for maybe getting done this year, but it just all depends on the weather and materials. I'm positive they have the fencing on hand, they had to get a new fencing subcontractor, I think they've locked that down, so they're, like I said, they're tentatively this week, but tough to say, even for sure date, but hopefully fall yet.
Nick, what you just said, basically the courts are ready except for the final surface, which is your lines and your place surface.
Correct.
So, yeah, that is a related thing, anytime you put that type of surface down. Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, wish, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Police Chief SD, we're moving on that one, we're gonna move, jump right to number five, the city engineer, Mr. Story.
Mayor Council, this is to approve a 60-month lease agreement with Metro Sales in the amount of $112.68. This is for a lease on our copier printer. Our current lease is up to the end of September, and we do have $122 budgeted per month for this item, so I'm asking for council approval.
Hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Mr. Prisinski?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. Two items from my office this evening. One, I want to thank Mr. Peltier for being here this evening, and I would also like to invite you to stay for our workshop, which is immediately following this meeting, where we will be talking about legislative priorities locally that may be of interest. We've got local legislators, Senator Farnsworth and Representative Igo here to talk about that, so if you have time, you're invited to stay. And then the second thing from my office, City Council, is thought exchange number two, the results are in, I will share that with the City Council as soon as possible by the end of the week, and then we will also post that on our website for our residents to take a look at, so.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to bids and quotes, again, starting with city engineer, Mr. Story.
Mayor Council attaches a quote from H. N. Masabi for 16 12-foot greater wing blades. This is their, just replace these when we're out for the winter. This is actually a quote, this will take us through winters for these wing blades, how we're looking at is next year's budget, and if we can buy some of this stuff this year to cover that. I'm asking for council approval, the quote is in the amount of $6,336, that'll come out of our op and budget for Public Works.
Hearing what Mr. Story has to say, wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Jesse, I had one question, we've gone to carbon steel now on our cutting blades, correct?
Yes, they're carbon.
So, yeah, so they last way longer, which.
Yeah, so we're buying, they last eight to 10 times longer, so we go to one or two blades a year.
Yeah.
Compared to.
One or two blades a day.
One or two a day or a week, yeah.
Very good, all right. No other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. B., Mr. Story.
Mayor Council attaches a quote from H. N. Masabi for 36 carb changeout sets of the greater mold boards. This is four sets per grader, again, this is two winters, so this will get us this winter and then the coming year after that. The total cost is 68,544.0 cents, this will come out of our 210 budget for Public Works, and I'm asking for approval.
Very good, any more of what Mr. Story had to say about mold board for the graders? Wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have motion, Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Swiberger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Number C.
Council attaches a quote from McQueen Equipment and from Gold Industrial for 301, that's what they do, the quote is, it's over 300, 95-gallon carbon tanners, the total cost of this is $24,549.99, this will come out of our 540 budget for sanitation, we use for damaged cans and new homes, new residents, so we are out of 95-gallon containers right now, I'm asking for council approval.
Hey, we're looking for a motion to purchase 301 95-gallon carbon containers. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? And carries. E., Jess.
Mayor Council attaches a quote from a construction for, to replace the bucket link pins and bushings on the, one of our loads, they're greaseless bushings, the ones we're putting, ones we're taking out, we're gonna get greasable ones, and our new fleet manager, Joe McKinney, doing a really good job down at Public Works, going through all of our equipment, getting everything ready for the upcoming winter, this quote is for $4,796, and I'm asking for council approval.
Okay, looking for approval for a quote for bucket linkage, wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. E.
Mayor Council, I want to hear, our number 69 dump truck, the transmission failed, we did bring it down, we had to tow it to Midstate Truck Service, attached is a quote for a new transmission, and we will have them installed, we get a two-year warranty if they install it, if we do it on our ship, we do not get the warranty. The total cost for this is $12,145.68, this is a very important piece of equipment with winter coming, so I'm asking for council approval.
Hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Jesse, I really applaud you on going with having them install it and get two-year warranties, so that's, that's big. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Kellerman.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I come before you this evening and request the approval of a quote from Dalco for a floor scrub in the amount of $9,480.84.
Okay, we're looking for a motion to support a new floor scrub for the library.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Administrator Candy Semple.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. We've been discussing the city website and its implementation for over a year. We launched our Civic Plus website and our Cit Rec, which is a component of Civic Plus in March. Today I bring for you, as we discussed at our September 6th workshop meeting, the approval of the quote from Civic Plus, the Civic Clerk component. This is an agenda and minutes management portion of Civic Plus, which will streamline our agenda process. The department has, they can put their item in a Dropbox, which goes right into the agenda. Will be time-saving for, on many levels, because we'll also be able to have electronic minutes taken, they'll be tailored to the City of Hiving's current format, so that is convenient for us. The total cost is $13,661.80 for a two-year term. Community Development Director Betsy Lanti brought forward to the heat of board the other night, requesting a $1,500 per year addition to our payment, so that would drop ours down $3,000 over two years, so I'm just asking for approval.
Okay, hearing what City Clerk Semple had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor B. Just one thing, so that residents, so this can be used for all our boards and commissions, and I asked that at the heat of meeting, and Ms. Oliveranti said yes, so that's, I think what's an important component, and I did realize, I guess I should have realized that it, you know, is part of the Civic Plus that we use in other, we're just building on what they can provide for us.
Yep, just like our Parks and Rec, the Civic Rec, it's Civic Clerk for our management of our minutes and agendas, and so what we're gonna ultimately do is then also streamline all of the minutes, kind of the same way, so that our residents find it a little easier to follow our minutes.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Yes, thank you. Having heard that, then will the PUC also have, will they be using this as well? Let's see, do you?
Counselor Hoffman-Sockman, they would be able to, we use up to eight different boards or commissions, so Planning Commission, which, you know, that is done in City Hall as well, so they would have that opportunity.
Good, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Thank you, Candy.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing from the commissions, we'll move on to license and permits. Approve the raffle permit application request of volleyball to have their raffle on Tuesday, October 5th, 2020, at the Lincoln Elementary School. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Number two, approve 2023 massage license renewal of Pam Angen, Side Lake, Minnesota. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Three, approve the raffle permit application request of the El Lodge, hold their first bingo on Saturday, November 4th, 2023, at the Do U. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.